I am calling to order meeting number one of the school committee. Meeting number one is, oh, that's great, Steve, is to honor our recently retired from the school committee, H. Dennis Sears. I'll say a little bit more first, but why don't we help ourselves to refreshments as a starting point? And thank you so much, Steve, Vito, for joining us. Kathryn Miller is supposed to be here, but I don't see her yet.
In part thanks to her.
Yes.
She shows up.
Yes, but she wrote it down. So, all right, why don't we help ourselves? Dennis, I think it's your job or maybe your lovely wife Renee's job to put the cut in the cake. And now we can all help ourselves. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I am calling, as soon as I find the page, meeting of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee to order on Thursday, July 25th at 6:02 PM. The first order of business is we need a motion to change the agenda to include, probably hasn't named business. So that would come number 13. It's vote on approval to accept four pre-K students as school choice and waive tuition. Someone make a motion to that effect? That was Jim? No, that wasn't Jim, it was Carl. Second on that? Art was the second. Okay. I will take a vote on that if there isn't any discussion. This is the usual way we handle these things. Carl?
I just have a question. What, what, which number is that?
New business, number 13. I would adding it there.
Oh, yeah, you're adding it. We're not taking, we're adding it, taking it out.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, so my question is, if we accept them as school choice students?
We'll discuss it when we get there. You're creating a position.
Oh, this is just switching it. Okay, I'm sorry.
The motion you made was to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Carl?
Yes.
David? No.
Yeah, of course.
Jimmy?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. So we will be adding it at number, under number 13. Thank you very enough. We are on the school committee minutes of June 6th. We have a motion to on approving those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2024.
Second motion from Nancy, a second from Kim. Any comments, questions?
Yes.
Issues you want to bring up, something?
Uh, yeah, can I go ahead? Am I recognized?
Yeah.
Okay, so item four, student representative report. On the first line, it says reported a variety of end of year events.
Yes.
Now, that's for, that's for Donald Trump to report, but, but not for McHale.
Okay, so we put that Y in there. Anything else there? Carl?
Pardon me?
Anything else?
Uh, not that I see. Or at least nothing as funny as that, but.
No, that was very good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, seeing that, let's vote to on the minutes. Carl?
Uh, yes.
Moment?
Yes.
So, yes.
So, yes. Carl?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so those minutes are approved. I, having approved those minutes, any receipt of correspondence?
None.
Good, then this is the perfect time for me to introduce our new school committee member. We have here a Stephanie Ulrich, who was joined from Sheffield as approved by the, pardon me, point of authority, Miss Sheffield. And when I gave the, reported the chair, I'll explain initially, but Stephanie, you want to take a minute to introduce yourself for anyone who doesn't know you?
Sure, I'm Stephanie Ulrich. I'm actually sort of an alumni. You know, I went to Southern Berkshire District from kindergarten through ninth grade when my family moved to Georgia and I moved back with them. My husband and I moved back to the area in 2000 and our children have been in the district daycare through graduation. My youngest just graduated, my youngest of three just graduated in June.
Outstanding baseball player. Incredibly good looking. And, uh, that's sexist, I shouldn't say that.
It's, no.
He's a builder of his own path.
Thank you. Professionally, I'm a project manager. So I've done everything from running multimillion dollar construction company and I'm currently working for the top ranked clean beauty brand in the nation, managing upwards of 35 to 40 projects at any given time. So I'm good at organizing, wrangling chaos and getting things taken care of, so.
We like that.
There's a lot more to say, but I will take anybody more than anybody's fine.
You're welcome aboard. Okay. I assume we do not have a student representative report?
Not tonight, and neither are we doing a student spotlight.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? As I see, we have public. Raise your hand if you are publicly commenting. Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to business managers report.
Who's joining us to be in?
Okay, great. Bye.
Good afternoon and good evening. Did anyone hear real thing?
We got, yes. Please introduce yourselves since we have a new board member.
Sure, absolutely. Jonathan Kavals, school business manager, consultant for a management solution. And hopefully, or I apologize that the warm report was not included in your packet, but before you, you can see there are various warrants for payroll to vendor to one health insurance warrant presenting on the seat, thank you for your approval. But it's, there's busy couple of months, say the least, with regard to end of year closeout, still doing, as well as, you know, approving requisitions at purchase source for FY '25, getting the school year underway and only had a matter of a month or so. So without further ado, I just ask for your approval of those warrants. If any question, I'd be happy to answer it, afraid.
If you look in your packet, it's number 7A. Yeah.
Move to approve the warrants.
All right, that's Carl. And wait a second there for any dim. Do we have any questions? Seems pretty self-explanatory. Okay, do we have any questions? Seeing none. We will now start at the other end. Stephanie, now that you've been introduced.
Thank you all. Same.
Okay.
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay, one extension and the rest, yes. Thank you very much. Anything else that you want us to know before we move ahead?
No, nothing at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. How to accept grants and gifts? So we have a donation to Mount Jeffrey Culinary from Lance Vermulon in the amount of $500. Right, motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Second.
Kim, with a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. This culinary program has definitely been getting some nice gifts. Okay. Let's start at the other end.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, and a yes. Okay, that's a unanimous approval of culinary grant. Right, gift? All right, any transfers? None? No budget transfers. Do we have anything moving on? Thank you very much. Anything with business with district member towns? I turn to you. Okay. All right. So, chairman's report. I want to first thank the people who are agreeing to run again. Art, Kyle. Not that, okay, Kim. And that's it. Everybody else waits till next time around. All right. I know for a couple of people, it was a really difficult discussion whether to take out papers or not. It's, it's not, it's a commitment on, it's a lot of work ahead of us. I very pleased that, and now I'll explain the issue of the point of authority and our regional agreement. Our regional agreement says that when somebody resigns after April 15th of the year, which we have not designated in, in our regional agreement, we found this out, well, we found this out after April 15th. The person who will fill the seat that's become vacant is a, there is an appoint of authority. In every town, the appoint of authority consists of the remaining members of the school committee from that town plus the select board. That appoint of authority solicits applications and after soliciting applications, reviews, interviews, and picks someone who remains in the position until the next biennial election. We have in parentheses, in that same section that describes the committee, a statement that says, and until such point as the per, um, as the person who resigns term would be up. Dennis's term is not up until 26, November of 26. Turns out this same thing had happened in Egremont and therefore the decision was made using counsel that we did not have the right to appoint someone from now until 26. And there was back and forth, the, um, in the discussion at the appoint of authority. I was the minority saying I felt we had to follow that language. And finally, what our attorney said was you have a previous decision. What would happen is if you, if it was after Election Day and there was a vote on anything, if we had appointed, in this case, it's Stephanie, until 26, anyone on the school committee could protest her vote after November Election Day of this year. And that his point of view was you're putting Sheffield in a position of having one less vote. So if, let's say it was a very close vote on, on a budget issue and someone said, I don't like the way she voted, they could protest that. So even though it's a little more muddled, we will have the Sheffield appoint of authority will have to meet again, both through the same procedure and appoint until 26. Fortunately, we had two candidates, really good candidates this time. We had Stephanie and we had Julie Hannam. And I'm pleased to report both Stephanie and Julie Hannam took out papers to run for the four-year term. So therefore, we have two really good candidates, one of whom is here now and appointed until November. Should something happen in November and 20 people want to be appointed until 26, we have the ability that Stephanie will have run and we will have the election results to, to draw upon. But please, if this happens, first of all, if it happens in any other town again, this is the, until we clean up that particular section in the regional agreement, if it happens in your town, please let us know because we probably could have avoided a little bit of muddles if we knew how that was resolved in Egremont. As soon as I spoke with Josh, he got back, Josh Coleman, our attorney, got back to me, he says, you've got a ruling from Egremont. So that's where we stand. In Sheffield, we have several people who are running for the two seats. Can anyone report in terms of any other town? Is anyone in Egremont running beyond you? From what you know?
No.
Okay. Yeah, and then in New Valborough?
I'm not the one, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm through 26.
Though I know, I'm just asking.
We have not, Sarah's been, Sarah's been talking, well, Sarah can speak to it.
Yeah, I've reached out to a few people.
Good.
Just a couple of parents that, even if they're not interested to kind of reach out to, you know, some parents.
So if people in, in New Malboro, you know, if it's somebody, people feel strong, we could mount, as we've done previously, a writing campaign. You just, you know, we let people know that that seat is empty. Is, is there? Carl, no problem, you're it. So that takes us and Monterey, you're it. Thank you, thank you. I know it's a farthing with a full family and all, but yeah. So that's the status of school committee, right? And they avoided, yes, Carl?
A, a quick, a quick question and, and a short, very, hopefully very short comment. The people who are currently on the school committee will be on the ballot in real fast order. Kyle, Kim, and one more?
Art.
I know, I'll send it, I'll send. All right, so.
And Stephanie.
Well, and. Sorry.
Okay, so they were.
She'll be doing double duty.
Now the comment. If, uh, it's, it happened, I think, once and maybe twice. If candidate for school committee sends a group email to the committee indicating that they are running for a position, I suggest that the, the only response that's appropriate from school committee members who receive such an email or is, uh, good or got it or something like that. And not to say I will support you.
Thank you.
Because although we don't know, it's not clear that that constitutes a violation of the open meeting law. It may be viewed as that, and I think it's the best idea for current members of the school committee.
Good point.
To, uh, to refrain from endorsing somebody before the full committee unless it's at a school committee meeting. I think it's probably a bad idea to do it at all, but, but just to do it in a group email would, would, would violate.
So basically, for anyone, this is an area, open meeting law, which I'm sure you're getting a dose of in your, where you read, open meeting law, you have to be really careful. Anything you communicate beyond an agenda item and time and date can be, is viewed as expressing opinion and you don't want to get yourself in that situation of something that we could be censored. So thank you for, for reminding on that. All right. The third item there is the Sheffield Fair and other town-specific events. We had, it was a very last minute one last year and I just did it and paid the entry fee, which I think is like $35. There was a table, but there were lots of people who came by because what, for people who have been involved with organizing the fair, really made a move to get families outside of Sheffield. So there were loads of kids. And I would, one, um, like the approval that the committee agrees that we should have tables at events like this. And it was staffed, Jim and I staffed it from the school committee. We had a number of students who came by, mostly sports kids, soccer kids and all, and drone. And it, I would like us, my view is, I think we should encourage that as a way to bring attention to our school district. So I would entertain, hopefully, a motion that people would want to approve our participation in that.
My comment and then Bonnie is the thing. People came in and wanted, needed our information. I mean, they, they weren't just wandering by to see what lunch was like. And I thought it was a good thing. I thought it was good that people saw us and what we were doing and wanted to hear more about the steps.
So will you make a motion to the effect that we participate?
What are we doing? What are we doing?
It's the Saturday after Labor Day.
Saturday after, like, I'd make a motion that we participate in the Sheffield Town Fair.
Okay. Can we add to that and similar events in other towns?
Certainly.
Okay, we have a second on that? Does he have to say it?
Did that?
Does he have to say it on his motion? Yes.
Did, can you repeat? I, I didn't hear it, could you?
Jim, would you repeat your motion?
The motion is that we plan to participate in the Sheffield Town Fair and similar events in other towns as a means of fun, getting the people in towns to know more about the schools.
I second. And Kim is second. Any further discussion? And that doesn't mean that it's just school committee people. I mean, I would, hopefully would have, you know, from administration, teacher. I mean, there were teachers who helped. Stephanie Graham supplied me with supply, finished products, art projects and all. And people came by and wanted to buy them. So might be something else we consider, but I really appreciated that, that she did that and we were able to show off, you know, once again. All right, any further discussion? Okay, in that case, let's vote. Start Stephanie? Yes.
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 Okay, and yes, so that's unanimous. There is one other item, which is the question we have on the, I mean, second meeting of the summer. And it has been suggested that what we do is make it a retreat type of thing. And my question is, after discussing this with Beth and hearing about, and she will be obviously telling you more how the administration reacted, is there any way if we did it either towards the end of August or sometime in September, that people would be willing to do like a morning to early afternoon on a Saturday? Whether it's possible?
Off grounds?
Off ground.
Wine involved?
Okay, yes, if it's off grounds, we could definitely have wine. Does that become possible for people?
It just depends on dates.
Yeah, in other words, we would put out the dates. And I think based upon the experience that the administration has had, which, you know, Beth will speak to, I think it could help for us in terms of getting a collaboration. All right, thank you very much on that. With that, I am turning it over to the superintendent. Who is really important. Oh, sorry, last thing. I don't know if everybody, just kidding. I don't know if everybody received the notice from MASC talking about changes based on state rules and that they're going to be coming out with a whole group of new policy. Because you have nothing else to do, Carl. So we don't have anything yet. It was just a warning that came in the notice. So you, you received it.
Absolutely. But I'll, I'll just have a very brief comment when, when.
When we get to your.
We get to that.
Okay, great.
Part of the agenda.
All right. I promise.
Thank you. It's okay. So I wasn't going to, I was going to hand off the part about speaking about the administrative team retreats to Ms. Dolan today, but she is a little under the weather, so she is not joining us. So I will just keep droning on after I finish my report and tell you more about that. But just to, I'll just start with what Bonnie ended with. I, I think it is really important to have, and we had done it in the past, since by time here, over the, the past eight years where we have had a school committee retreat and not necessarily whether it's offsite or not, but I think that time together and to plan and have a collective vision for the upcoming year, review the work that the administration has done over the summer and be forward-facing as we open the school year is critically important. And I think it builds camaraderie amongst the team. And so I, I was strongly encouraging that we do that. Again, I think it's, it's good timing and really beneficial. I say it every year, but summer is anything but downtime for the administrative team, but it is really exciting. And we've just been doing some tremendous planning and we're really, really excited about the upcoming school year. It's not, definitely not the same without our faculty and staff and students in the building, but we've been working really hard getting ready for, for opening days. So, um, today even, I had the opportunity, believe it or not, I'm already welcoming new teachers, new faculty and staff members that are hired and getting them in the door and ready for their events. But I was going to talk about several incredible PD opportunities that I have had and our administrators have had. In fact, our principals are all at the principal institute to, for this week. Ms. Hubbard was at her retreat prior to us and the superintendent's association had it in the week of the 15th through the 19th. In the end of June, we had the opportunity as Ms. Alcantara, Ms. Dolan and I attended the Future Focus Schools Conference in Washington DC at the invitation, the personal invitation of Bill Daggett, who gave us a substantial discount to attend. He was our opening day speaker last year and he really was encouraging school districts to come as teams and learn about innovative, future-focused ideas about education. And it was an excellent conference. So we had the opportunity to have breakout sessions, speakers of some of the most forward-thinking ideas and initiatives going on across the nation. So I have lots of material to share with our faculty and staff and the committee in more detail. July 9th through 11th, I was in Ohio. Um, July 9th through 11th, I was in Ohio, um, for the Leading Now Summer Gathering, which, um, was the culminating experience of, uh, the cohort 12, which I participated in. Um, that organization is, um, they're supporting superintendents and system leaders in navigating the political landscape and the complexity of the, um, you know, politics that are happening across the country and, uh, providing supports and, um, tangible resources and ideas. Um, they are also thinking about, um, working with school committees as well when you're, when you're faced with, um, um, responding to challenging, um, political climate. So I think it's been really valuable. And, um, again, we have some more resources available for, to share. Um, then, as I said, the, um, the 15th through the 19th was the, um, Mass Association of School Superintendents Professional Development Annual Institute, where again, you work with, uh, 300 districts across the state of Massachusetts, um, with tons of breakout sessions, um, opportunities to collaborate. Uh, I had time to spend with my Berkshire County colleagues, um, and it was a really, um, a great experience. I have the opportunity to be a part of the professional development committee for the state. And, um, it was, um, uh, another really well attended and well, um, uh, worth the time to, to do that. Um, throughout the summer, the National, um, Association of School Superintendents, the rural cohort that I've been a member of for the last three years, continues to meet even throughout the summer with all sorts of things going on that is all rural schools all the time. So that is happening. Um, so I feel, I feel lucky to have the opportunity to, um, participate in these organizations and bring that back to not just us, but our, um, Berkshire County, um, districts as well. So one of the exciting things that happened at the, um, annual institute this year is that I, um, went out of my way to introduce myself to both the acting commissioner of education, um, Russell Johnston, and, um, our secretary of education, Patrick Tutwiler. And I went like this and said, hi, I am Beth Regalbudo from Southern Berkshire. And Julie will attest to the fact that he said, oh, I know, and jumped up and down. And he is this really, um, six foot eight gigantic man. And he was so excited and is loving the idea of coming out to the district. Had his assistant put it in the calendar. So I'm hoping that both of them will be able to come and we can plan an event for the fall. Um, they're already booking out to, um, September, October, but we're working on getting on the calendar. So more to come. And I think that would be something else we'd want to plan for as part of our retreat as a team. Uh, a little reminder that I am trying to schedule a meeting of the superintendent's regional roundtable, um, which, uh, is for the end of August. So please respond to Michelle, uh, your availability. She, she gave a couple of dates by Monday, August 5th, if you can join. Um, that is the one where we talk with, um, school committee members, boards of selectmen, finance committee members, where we can talk at that level about, um, what's happening across all of our communities. Um, the state budget, um, we haven't talked, we haven't been together in a long time, so I apologize for all this information. Um, the conference committee budget, um, released their final report. Things that are important for us to note, um, the minimum aid per pupil was, um, is out at a hundred and four per pupil. So normally we get $30 per student. So they have it up quite a bit, um, for chapter 70. Um, universal free lunch is funded at 170 million, um, but that is not full year. So it's free lunch, but not for full year as of right now. Rural aid got funded at 16 million, which is only up 1 million, but better than, than not up. So we will take it. And, um, a little bit disappointing after all the advocacy is that we really were pushing to get a chapter 70 task force, um, to review the minimum required contribution and that did not make it through. So, um, people are, are a little bit disappointed about that. And, um, the regional transportation reimbursement aid, um, is at 84%. So a little bit lower than it was, um, in the past year. Um, as far as I know, I don't think it's finalized or signed as of yet. Um, my, I'm going to do, uh, a July news and notes, my, my Monday letter, but one version for the end of July next week. And then I will be back doing my normal, um, Monday news and notes for August 19th, every Monday throughout the school year. And, um, just an informal reminder, you will get a formal invite, faculty and staff return on Monday, August 26th for convocation. We have a guest speaker Tuesday, the 27th. Um, again, you guys will have formal invites to the program. Um, and students return on Wednesday, August 28th for a half day. So I promise that's all I'm saying for now.
Thank you. They did, as when I heard the, uh, four o'clock news, they said they still won't finish putting what they have. Um, but that they added 2 million to chapter 70. Now, I don't know if that's in addition to what you, you know, afforded here.
Uh, it could be. I, it's, it's wasn't in writing yet, so we'll see.
And could you speak to the, um, status of our solar?
Um, so I think at this point, um, well, maybe it's, can you, or do you want me to talk about? We're, we're at the financing phase at right now.
Yes, everything's been inspected in, um, eighth half inspection. We're pretty much, we had national grade to go out and stall here. But it's up and going. Um, they say that is the longest part of the process, a whole thing.
Real?
Yes. Yes. They said this is part that will they go always, that they have the line reason when they come, they just come with the red. And so whenever you get that inspection, they come there wired, maybe you're done.
I think, I think where we are is where we, in our, our, our end, we got the financial paperwork to sign. So, um, but it's, you know, we're, they're hoping to make it happen as soon as it can. And even after you sign it, it's a couple of weeks. So, um, it's, it's incumbent on us to get that signed.
I will not leave here without signing. I thought I had signed already, but, you know, we want to take advantage of this warm weather time and store up that.
We talked to, yeah, let's solve them. They, they estimate that will produce less than we're signing to our courtesy. So, you're.
Thank you. I get question. Board, please.
So what happens with the free and reduced lunch if they don't fund it for the whole year?
Right. So I don't have an answer to that. Um, I am, I'm hopeful that, um, there will be some revisiting like they did last year, um, to think about. I think they ended up doing a supplemental budget to, to, um, add on. I think we were kind of in the same position last year. They needed to add on some more funding, but I don't know what their plan is. I, it's, I just, I wanted to make it clear that that does not cover fully funding lunch. So I have to be aware of that.
And if you know already when you would want school committee members of the 26th, 27th and 28th, as soon as you listen, because that's very often I've known a lot of school committee members are away, you know, at that point, right before Labor Day, the ones that who don't have children.
Well, I'm saying, so convocation is typically, I, I'm, I am meeting with, um, with kind of a team that will be made above teachers and, um, students and as we plan and besides the administration. So we haven't formally done it, but typically, um, that's why I'm saying you'll get a formal invite like you usually get with the schedule of the events. Um, but typically it starts right around eight on Monday for the convocation, which will be a couple of hours. Um, the guest speaker is not until 10 on Tuesday. Um, and then, uh, there's, uh, lunch opportunities to spend time with staff before they, um, continue on for their professional development and setting up their rooms. But we haven't finalized all the, the details at this point. So that's why you'll send a written invite.
Thank you. And it really is, it, it's nice to be there for the start and hear, you know, the, the enthusiasm that goes with it. Okay. Are you going on to Julie's report?
So Julie's report was really, I believe, going to be about, um, the work that we've been doing as an administrative team. Um, which is what we're hoping to involve you in. But, um, we work, we have, um, five retreats in the summer, full day retreats, uh, that the administrative team works together. Um, we do, um, and one of our biggest tasks is to go through our strategy for continuous improvement and, um, uh, you know, look at what we've accomplished, look at what we hope to accomplish and, um, update the action steps. And that really acts as our north star. Um, it, it helps us set our goal as, as a collective body between myself and the school committee. And then, um, the administrators all trickles all the way down, uh, to the classroom. So, um, what we were hoping, and I think that was another thing we wanted to, uh, have a retreat is to have more people weigh in and make sure that people really know what we're doing and how each, um, item, uh, connects all the way through in the district. So everybody can see the alignment and really be able to talk about it, um, uh, in the public. So that's another thing that we'd like, you know, school committee feedback on and maybe even think about a wider, um, community conversation. You know, sharing that and, and getting feedback. So, um, that, that's just some of the things that we're thinking about. But, um, all summer long, we're really, um, working on our own, um, leadership. We're thinking about ways that we can, um, encourage and distribute leadership among our faculty and staff members and, um, where we can incorporate student choice and voice, um, throughout. So, um, they're very busy, but I would say, um, really great days. Cause, um, you, you, you really start to see the, um, data and, and how much progress we've made as a team, um, over the years. Um, so it's, it's really, it's really great. So we'd love to share that with Mark.
Hey. Sandy. Um, it is, are you able to pick up Sandy or should we ever?
This.
Got a mic?
Got a mic.
Are you going to do karaoke?
Yeah.
Um, this is a dog so a little bit pop what that was saying. Um, we didn't have, we've had our third retreat day on Tuesday. We met Monday and Tuesday, very full, very rich days of discussion and, um, gave us a lot to reflect on and go back and think about as we prepare for next Monday when we meet again. Um, I did get a chance, uh, to be at the summer institute for Western Mass Special Education Directors, the week of the eighth through the 12th. Um, I've been a member for 16 years now. I'm on the E board. It was my, I think, eighth year. And I do coordinate with, um, a couple of other members, the, the conference. And I think it's important to note that when I started attending those conferences, like I said, 16 or 17 years ago, we had about 20 members. Uh, we now have 80. And, um, today I got outreach from Boston, Malden. These are not Western Mass. I don't know if you know that, but they're not Western Mass. Um, I think we're going to end up being the entire state, which is really amazing. So it's gotten to be quite an event. Jamie Camacho, who is the assist, um, the acting, um, commissioner of special education, um, was present, used to be Russell, who's now the acting commissioner. And, um, we had a lot of discussions. You're going to hear a little bit more about it, but there is a new IEP that's being, being adopted statewide, um, that we're training our staff on right now. So we had some of our staff members who stepped up to do some leadership and have gotten, gotten some training. And, um, they've been working together to train the staff here. And we've trained, um, we've done some work with the general education staff as well as the special education staff. We're going to have a training for parents. And, um, so that's some of the work we're doing right now and is a lot of what happened at our institute. Um, just to report on summer program, which believe it or not, ends next week. I just can't believe it. We just completed our fourth week today. Um, we've had about 60 students attending, um, ranging in age from three to 17, I think. Um, it's been a very, very good summer program. I can't tell you how well it's run. Um, I've seen nothing but happy faces. I've seen growth in some of our students. It's really wonderful to report. I have seen nothing but happy faces. I want to give a shout out not only to the staff that have been involved. And we've had a lot of our staff members step up to the plate to be involved in this summer program to make it really effective. We had a coordinator, Peter Lopezino, when our school adjustment counselor stepped up to the plate to lead it. He's done a fantastic job, um, transportation, um, food service. And I just really need to say something about Jonathan Doer, who has done an outstanding job once again in preparing, um, breakfast, lunches, snacks, our meals for our food, our retreats. And always just, he's just a pleasure. And I was, you know, an alumni. So I wanted just to mention that. Um, regarding, and I'll talk about this more when you get to the pre K, um, if you have any questions regarding accepting those, um, children. Uh, we have been looking a lot at our pre K enrollment, um, our classes at all the different buildings. We have reviewed all of the, um, screenings that were conducted on June 14th and 17th during the screening fair. And, um, right now it looks like we have, um, 58 children readily enrolled and some that have, it's, it's still happening. Like it's not over. We're, we're getting phone calls and emails every day. So, um, that's really exciting. And we've been able to, um, look at some grants and we just were awarded, and I think it's important for you to know, for the fourth year, year in a row, United Way of Mass Bay has, um, awarded us, um, funding for this summer program this year. So that's fantastic. It, they have supplemented actually largely funded our summer program for the past four years, um, for, especially for our pre K to three students. And they've awarded us again, it was kind of a delayed award. We just found out about it a couple of weeks ago, but they did, and it's fantastic. So I needed to say that. They, they seek us out as partner and we really appreciate that. So.
And you, uh, the summer program, you're beyond all the sports activities. And I've heard those have been fantastic.
Yes.
The camps, the basketball or, you know, what is, what do you have?
What do we have going? So we actually have two different academic and social programs going. One is called Extended School Year. That's for students who are on IEPs and have it in their, um, plans to receive support during the summer to prevent regression and to build on their skills. And then we have a general education program for students who might need a boost. So, um, and we have, um, like I said, special educators, general educators working together to make sure that those students are getting the supports they need across, um, all areas. And for the, you know, the culminating social event, I will say too, we kind of school adjustment counselor on staff the entire summer too, which has been great. Um, she's been into every classroom, doing some, um, positive behavioral supports in, in the classes. And next week culminating event, they're doing an Olympics. So, and each class is contributing and they're really excited about it. It's planned for Wednesday. The weather looks good. Um, and, uh, once again, Jonathan's doing, um, a cookout for them. And, uh, so it's been good. So after the work they've been working, you know, doing reading, math focus, the socialization is a big piece of it too.
And did you find this year, did we have increased participation?
Uh, you know, it's interesting. I feel like we did because truthfully, um, when you're planning summer program, it seems like people are really interested, but then summer gets here.
Good.
And, yeah, for, you know, I, I hate to say it, you get on a summer schedule, right? And you do things differently and you have more plans, but I, we've had more, um, consistent participation this year. Yes, we have.
That's great because I remember a couple of years ago, you would just, you know, was, that was not the case.
It, and historically that's happened kind of that way.
So that has been wonderful as a year.
Yeah.
I wonder, you know, it's a doctoral program or even a master's program, uh, project for someone to see trace students who take part and they're, if they don't lose as much when they go to school.
Oh, exactly. You know, it's so interesting and I wish I could, I, I wish I could take a video of this, but one of our, our younger students who, um, is on the autism spectrum, um, has really shown such growth this summer. She had, she had one major goal. She achieved it within the first four days of being here. And we've just seen this amazing growth. And I need to say a couple of things. I could go on and on about the people that are teaching and helping in this summer program. But Carly Dival is teaching.
Oh.
One of our programs. She's got her T2 certification now.
Great.
And she's continuing on with her master's degree, but she, um, she's done a remarkable job this summer. Um, they all have, everybody has, but, um.
She, that's one of the people I gave my future educator scholarship to.
Well done.
Thank you.
She's going to, I was talking to her today and said, so are you coming back to the area? Next year or after your dump? Keep us in mind. If she may, she has obviously a lot of strong ties to this area. But, um, one of our other educators is a longtime educator, came in and was talking to me this morning. Ellen Wallace, who, um, is special educator and, um, the three, four, um, class grades. And she said to me, she goes, I love them. It's always, it's, this is great. This is the best. I love working summer program. And, you know, when you hear that, you just know how rewarding it is, not only for the students, but for the staff. So that was really good to hear.
That is incredible to hear. That'd be a nice article for.
I'd be happy to.
This letter. This letter.
Yeah. Maybe next week I'll go around and interview everybody and learn their experience.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Really. Okay. And speaking of that, we can move right into our new business item. We have a motion to approve to accept four pre-K students as school choice and waive tuition. I'll take a motion to that effect. Previous motion, just put it here. Thank you, Carl. We have a second. A way of a second, that was Nancy. Okay. Do you want to speak to it? Sandy, want to speak to it?
I mean, either one of us, I think, I just want, and I'll let her do the bulk of it, but we do wait till kind of this type of, this time of year because typically we do not accept choice in pre-K for, but they, that's, as she was saying, they do an analysis of the program, if there's space, if there's need, you know, so I'll let her do the specifics around that, but you're getting it now. And I didn't think we could really wait to make the decision till our next meeting, which is well after school starts for these families.
Yeah.
So, you know, this was what we could make a recommendation. So why don't you give a little more specific?
There are four families requesting that their children enter into our program. Those families have ties to the district already. There is either siblings that are already attending or in one case, a cousin. So there are ties. They have all written letters. You can see them there expressing their interest. And I talked to the pre-K teachers. We reviewed it again yesterday and they all have expressed that they want to accept these children as kids. There's a relationship, obviously. The siblings, cousin have gone through the pre-K program already. And in looking at our numbers and based on consideration of all of the students who live within District 1, we feel that we can welcome those children in. And Charles and I have obviously discussed this as well. He's unable to be here right now, but we discussed it also. So two, I just wanted to say this correctly. Three of the children would be coming to Undermountain and one which.
Just for those of you who might were not on the school committee when this has come up, at least since I've been on the school committee three times, it has been our past practice and policy. If there is a sibling or a relationship, in one case it was like, think of relative more distant, and there is room and no one from within our five towns is being locked. We have passed it exactly as this was written. So that's been our practice, that is policy. All right. Anyone have questions that want to speak to it? Carl?
Yeah. My question is, can you read back or if there's something to read back, but what is the actual text of the motion?
To accept four pre-K students as school choice and waive tuition.
Okay. So right, that's what I thought it was. And this is my question. If they're accepted, my understanding of school choice is that it differs from a tuition student. School choice doesn't involve tuition. School choice, at my understanding, involves the payment.
I'll make it easier for you. It's because it's pre-K. So what we have done is exactly this way in the past.
So if it were other than pre-K, if it were grade one or grade six, the tuition would be, portion of that would not exist. Okay. I didn't know that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? In that case, let's take a vote. I'm going to go a different direction this side. Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Good. Thank you. You can inform those families and we welcome them and we know they're going to be stars, right? You're welcome. Okay. All right. Now we go to the topic for the August 29th news, slash workshop. This is the one, I don't want to have, you know, people feel that we're doing something just to have an August meetup. But I really think we would benefit for going the retreat direction and at the same time passing whatever we may need to do, you know, that would come up that you would need to have us at on.
There will definitely be business and that needs to happen, so.
So I'd like to get a sense of, from the school committee members in terms of, do you want just a normal Thursday evening, two hours? Or are you willing to go for a retreat? That would be, let's say, an eight to two or nine to three off campus train?
In addition to the 29th?
No, no, no. We're in the, it's happening, it's combining. Yes. Okay. And eight, yes.
August 29th is Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And is the proposal for this to be a meeting at, at regular school committee time or nothing?
This is, that was what Sarah was just asking. It would be in lieu, if we opted for a retreat type event, we would combine the business with, and then do the retreat. So I'm not, I'm not looking to add a meeting. I'm looking to get a sense of the, bless you, committee as to whether just a business meeting or are you willing to do a business meeting combined with a retreat?
Just as an aside, the, either my hearing has deteriorated significantly in the last week or the acoustics in this room are very different than they are.
They are absolutely in total.
I'm going to ask someone with much younger ears, are you having trouble hearing anything? Please say yes.
Sometimes, yes. No, it's definitely a difference in the acoustics. And you should make sure, aside from a loud mouth here, yes.
Oh, okay. So there, there's been a little bit lost and so if you.
All right. And we will accommodate, all right?
Yeah, just, I mean, just, you know, a couple of decibels.
Okay. All right, everybody raise it a couple of decibels. Other comments?
I'm fine either way. I'm fine either way. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that, you know, my schedule is fairly flexible at the moment, but I think for those whose flex schedules aren't, it might be difficult to do that retreat thing in the day.
Yes, it would be, that would be the Saturday one.
Oh, okay.
The retreat would be a Saturday ticking up, you know, the early part of the day.
Gotcha.
Unless you, because most of you cannot work during the day.
Yes.
During the week. During the day.
I would prefer the Saturday during the day at some point, we're doing the business on it than the Thursday.
Okay.
On the first week of school, where especially.
Okay. The comment is from Kim, is she would prefer the Saturday and that we do it as a retreat, but we also have business part of the day's event. I'm like, Kim?
Was that take the Saturday commitment from eight to two down to eight to noon? Is that what you're suggesting? Or the retreat is still?
Eight to two plus.
It wouldn't be in there. The business.
Understood.
Yeah, it would not extend it to eight to five or anything. No.
Yes. And for, again, for those parents or people who are parents who have, have kids doing sports and stuff like that, is this mandatory or is this optional?
There's not, no, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to hold it if we, you know, have that situation of people who can't come because this, and we don't have sports schedule yet. I checked. Okay. All right.
Yep. Yeah. I was going to say, it's just, that's the only question.
Okay. And we should avoid that week of the first week of school is what Kim is saying. Yeah. Carl?
That Saturday, August 31st, is that the Saturday of Labor Day weekend?
Yes. So she's saying avoiding that.
Avoiding.
Oh, right. Right. Okay.
Okay.
And if we run, if we did it the 25th, I might be away.
Definitely.
I don't think I'd be around now.
What dates were those?
Uh, I think, I think it's the week, like the.
I will send out a note to see if there is a Saturday, what Saturday can bring us together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So that'll be my job there. Beth, did you want to answer it because you had?
Our hands hand up.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. I looked down here.
No problem. How can we have a business meeting that same day without causing problems?
Post retreats. You can, you post, you post it anyway. Most people don't want to sit eight to two, but you know, you post a business meeting.
So you would carve out.
I, I'm aware of that, but will it still have to be televised and how, like it is tonight?
Sure.
Do, how do we?
We just.
You don't have to televise it, but you can, you can televise the business portion of the meeting and then do a retreat.
Okay. You just informed CTSB.
From this time to this.
And.
Okay.
And it may be televised, may not.
Okay.
Any, any other comments? That was a comment about televising. Okay. Any other questions? All right. The follow-up is I will send out a note in terms of two things, dates and what you think should be included in order for it to be beneficial to you as a school. All right. So that'll be my job. All right. Meeting schedule.
There's always a packet on 13V is a proposed 24, 25 school committee meeting dates. It's not put on a calendar, not that we'd be able to read it in here tonight anyway.
Me.
Can you hear me, Carl? 13V?
Uh, yeah, I couldn't find it, but David found.
Okay, great.
It's on the back of.
Yeah. Right. We did double side to avoid.
Yes.
Killing another tree. But so these dates and are as close to or near where they were this year as potential proposed dates. We'll get them onto a calendar so you can look at it, but they are proposed based on what they need to be on the regional agreement and what has worked for us, you know, based on our last couple of years' schedules. You know, same, same level up distance, they're usually about either two to three weeks apart around holidays, around any of those types of things.
Here we. Now, we don't need to act on it today, correct?
Well, they're proposed, so I mean, I think we could look at, you know, and then if we have to make adjustments, we make adjustments, but we need to get a schedule.
Okay. So why don't we take, I'll accept a motion to, to approve the school committee meeting schedule as proposed, the 24, 25.
So moved.
Okay. Well, I'll take part on that. And a second from Carl. Okay. All right. Stephanie?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And a yes. Okay, done.
Matt, you like that?
Okay. So I actually took my sister-in-law on a ride around campus when they were here last week. Very impressed and I loved seeing a lot of the things that have been cleaned up. So we have a councilman who will now give us an update.
Yeah. Wonderful. Okay. So tonight we have our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Ed Brammer here to, we thought we would take the opportunity because, you know, we have a truncated meeting schedule to really kind of combine it with a little bit of a Buildings and Grounds update. And we weren't sure at the time of whether or not we would need some input from the school committee to maybe move some funding around based on capital projects, but we didn't. So it all came within the budget and as anticipated, but there's so much work going on. We thought you might want to see and hear a little bit about the work being done. This is the spotlight. Not really, but it's going to be a spotlight, I feel like. There are, there are some alumni working for us, so we could say that. So Ed, would you like to go ahead and share?
Evening, everybody. Yes, do you?
Is he being picked up?
Well, he's got. He's got.
Out basically.
Yes, we do have a lot of stuff going on this summer, quite a few projects going on around the school. We'll get right into it with the first picture up here. We are working on having the entire elementary gymnasium floor sanded down, repainted, adding the Eagle Head logo to it, new lines, and just kind of refreshing that whole thing and bringing it back. Fred and Benny also repainted the entire gymnasium last week, so it has fresh court paint on it as well. So that's pretty exciting. I was looking forward to the kids seeing that when they come back. And we are also recoding the high school gymnasium before the students come back as well. There was any money there in the cabin fund to complete both of those. There is a picture of district offices. We put some new flooring in the district offices over the past few weeks, repainted everything. That's all coming together. We got everybody moved back in. Today, I think we pretty much finished moving everybody back in. That's been going well. That is inside of the library. The elementary library this year is getting a facelift. The full new flooring, they're in the process of painting now, and we are bringing some new furniture in that is more suited for the elementary students.
Secondary.
Bookshelves and.
Secondary.
Secondary. Sorry. Secondary.
Not bad.
But that's moving along quite well, as you can see the flooring. Yeah, it's the same flooring that's been being installed throughout the, throughout the school. Continuing hardwood flooring in the A wing of the building. We are continuing to come out through all the hallways, which will bring us just about out to the elementary office this year, so that wing will be almost depleted. We still have a few rooms down there to take care of upcoming. Let's see, what else we have going on inside? We did repaint the chorus room this year as well. Gave that a nice little update in there, brought it up to date a little bit better. We are installing a new playground, hopefully this fall. We ordered everything. We have to have a little bit of site work done. The installer's out a little while, so it's probably going to be mid-fall, late fall by the sounds of it here. Something falls through maybe a little bit sooner. We're adding eight new swings and a new slide.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
That's in response to our playground. We're making it easier. Of course, for the nighters.
And continuing on the backside where the playgrounds are, the fire was been a little bit of disrepair for the last few years. It's kind of getting trip hazards and things. So before school starts, we're having the fire road repaved. They're going to do it too with a skimming quote, open the whole thing and kind of bring it back nice and level again, give it to all the trip hazards and reconnect everything back to the school. All the striping will be done in the parking lot before the school year begins. Also, if anybody goes out around campus, there is a little ground, kind of house shed and sits at the end of the elementary parking lot that's been there for ages and is very much in disrepair. We could find for the bits, talk to a contractor, we're going to have that removed before the beginning of school as well. Piling pulled out, ground re-lveled and put back nicely, so we can kind of get rid of that. And let's see, door replacements, replacing the receiving door on the back of the building, which is rotting out kind of and needs to be repaired. I'm working with another company on quoting. We're working on installing a new door in the boiler, new Marlboro, and I believe before it's, the door is in pretty rough shape and we're going to continue going around, looking And we're going to continue going around, looking at a few more. We have some capital money for door replacement this year, so we want to kind of just keep going with that. Um, wood pellet boilers, we're re-bricking the second one this year. We re-bricked one last year. This year they're re-bricking the second one. They've updated the grate systems in the bottoms of the shaker grates to make them more efficient. So we don't have to maintain them as much, scrape boilers down. So they'll hopefully run a little bit more efficient this year, although they did really well last year and, uh, they, they ran pretty well for us last year, which was nice. Um, handicap door openers down in the B wing. We have a student who has some physical challenges. So we're, uh, installing some handicap door openers to make it accessible for him to get out of the building in case of emergencies, if he needs that. Um, let's see, get the jock floors, uh, replaced in our fire suppression system. We have a new jockey pump going in, which controls the fire suppression system for the tack pack. So that was replaced, uh, just last week. They've got to do a little bit more work just to get it up and running and test it, and that'll be all set. Um, elevator, we needed an operator arm in our elevator. Uh, there was some money set aside a few years ago for this. Uh, I re-traced the notice elevator a few weeks ago. Uh, the price had increased a little bit, so we had to move some things. But that is now on order and the elevator door operating part will be replaced. I don't have a timeframe yet. They just ordered it. So it could be a few months out before that happens. Um, for the outside, we did buy a field paint sprayer, a, uh, powered paint sprayer. So we've been doing our field aerosol cans, which are very expensive and very timely to hold up very well. So we, uh, there was some money in the capital account for new one more this year. Did not need our lawn mowers, been pretty good shape and we don't need to replace one yet. So we took some of that money to buy the field sprayer to just make life a little bit easier, a little bit quicker out there for us. Um, with the fields, we also, uh, ordered permanent field markers, which are, they go into the field, the corners of all the soccer fields and they stay around permanently. So when we go set them up next year, the straight lines, then we can put our time out there. The, uh, can set up on the soccer for looks.
Right.
Uh, the community flagpole in front of the school is being repaired. Um, don't have an exact timeframe on it. We just got it signed off on. Um, I heard back from, but they are going to be coming, replacing the cable, new stainless steel pranks, going to put a new wall on the top, new six by 10 flag and we have that. So we have a flag up front of the community entrance, hopefully before the beginning of school. Um, have a mailbox now. We have mail delivery started to the school, um, something that John had actually started my press center. Fred is, we're just bombing through with Dow, but we rehab one of our library book return boxes that wasn't being used anymore, equal mailbox. Um, so we're having mail delivered here now. I was just going to say a few thousand dollars a year now having the P O boxes anymore. Um, and then just our normal summer stuff, which isn't very fascinating, but we replaced some wreath straps in the kitchen. Running in the septic tanks, blowing in the drains. Um, things are, are still happening before the, uh, end of the school year. Um, I would like to just address, um, our building one, the subcontracting cleaners that we brought in. Um, been almost a year now that we've had them, uh, little glocky start, just trying to get everything out. But these guys have really come around doing a great job for us. We have two of them here cleaning for the summer. These guys are doing cleaning that is kind of unbelievable. We've had three teachers approach me already. They've come in and said their rooms have never been this clean. They've never smelled like this. They've never looked like this. So I just want to give props to these guys that, that we did bring in. They're doing an outstanding job. And, uh, Carly Duval, once again, um.
Awesome.
Sort of works for us part-time in the evenings with some cleaning. And, um, Joe Jamaro, the graduate this year is also working for us this summer and these guys are, are doing a great job. They've been outstanding. Worked right along every Jordan and, um, they're just doing a phenomenal job. The school is looking very good and we should be ready to go for the beginning of the school year. And I think that about covers the projects that we have going. If anybody has any questions, that's.
Yes, Ken.
What about the track and field that's supposed to be resurfaced?
We are working with somebody on that. They're having issues finding what material we're going to use. Um, I spoke to them again last week. Um, they said they're still looking. I'm going to contact a couple of other people and see if.
Can you miss it?
I'm going to move.
We shouldn't just.
Get it moving, um, if somebody else has some better ideas, but that is in the process of going forward. We're just kind of, it's taking some time to get there.
Okay, let's put this before the season begins.
Art, we'll go as fast as we can go.
Art, no.
Hopeful, but I, yeah, we're going to have the, it's that, that might be a little bit of a challenge, but we're.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Art.
In the library, um, the money that we allocated, so will the library be all done by the time school starts?
That's it all.
Done.
I had.
Banners will be out of there about a week from now. Um, the furniture is due to be here right around the middle of August. And the company that supplying the furniture is going to put it all together, do all the installation. So once we have our guys done their painting things, it's just waiting on this, for the product to show up, but it will be ready to go.
What, what about air conditioning?
Uh, we're working on pricing on that. Yes, we had talked about putting air conditioning in there. Yes.
It was. Okay, and we also had spoken about the areas that hadn't gotten those splits earlier, like on the back of the first floor and the high school wing.
Down the, uh, wing of the high school side.
Yeah.
There's floor.
Yeah.
Four rooms, I believe, where the trees were removed and they're working on the same thing, working.
Great. Okay, thank you. And a compliment in driving around the back. Um, this is the old broken down wood table that I was always worried about kids getting hurt. I see it's gone. There's a lovely, whatever that material is, table, there's grading there and it looks like you have a mulch pit that you could use for, do you use that to, for the elementary, uh, playgrounds?
Yes, I believe I'll back that.
Yes.
Let the guy know.
It's, it looks so much. It looks so much cleaner.
Art and, and moving right along that I said, very happy with them.
Well, you, it really makes, makes such a difference. Thank, yeah, art and art.
The shed that you're taking away at the playground, are you putting a new one back or are you doing away with it altogether?
No, it's going away altogether. I believe it used to be used for storage for, uh, new drama or stage, but there's just about as old wooden stage you can do that hasn't been used. And I don't even know how many years to be honest with you, but, uh, we, National Grid is going to move the meter off the building. The power is disconnected. So we, they gone.
Oh, okay.
The floors fall.
Yep, okay.
But no, it's not going back. They're just going to level that area up and grass seed back and there it is.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you very much and thanks for the work.
Very well.
We have great graduates.
We do.
We.
Keep coming back.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you. And just being quite hard.
That's incredibly hard. I can see it.
My, you know what my test is? I want you to do the staircase when you come in the high school entrance, the staircase up to the second floor.
Yes, once.
Yeah. Yep, they worked on because that is, I always judge that at the beginning of the year, I walk up there and I want to, I would hope to see that they could dress the condition of that.
Yeah, it worked. I think.
Not only that, well, I mean, you know, it's not like it was. Good, all right.
I have one other question. How much carpeting do we have left in the building?
Uh, left for a million, there's still quite a lot. You still have the entire by school and the pretty G way is still fully carpeted. So we, we have ways to go. We're, we're kind of working our way out for us, essential offices and heading towards design and ice weather. But there's, there's still a lot of rest of our, there's a lot of.
Okay.
Let me ask a question as, I don't know whether this is something that post pandemic or whatever, that there might be some kind of funding for that, some kind of grant for upgrading health wise.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, if you don't know it, it's, yeah.
But, um, but we're, it is, it is a priority for us. So we're going to keep, keep going with it as we can.
Yep.
Okay, superintendent's evaluation. This is where we have to take a vote. Um, the vote that I'm going to let. You see what?
I thought this was coming off.
Yeah, that's what, okay. The, well, I thought it had been done before the two weeks.
It is not, it's not ready to go.
Okay, no, not the report, but just the overall evaluation on some.
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
Through the committee.
Okay, um, we have additional work on the subcommittee in terms of the report. And since we do not have to turn in, I mean, Jim could report please on what the overall evaluation was, but the report itself is not ready and, um, we're going to do additional work on it. Okay, Jim, do you want to report?
I mean, if Andy, if you just want to kind of the results. Yeah, there is additional work to be done.
Carl, can you hear him?
There's additional work.
Yes, I'll hear him. I mean, it's not that bad. It's right next to it.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
There's additional work to be done on the report. There's also, um, this year we did the report using Survey Monkey for the first time. Um, well, thank you all for putting up with, with that. There were several glitches with Survey Monkey, which I'm sure we can, we can work on for next year. Um, some of the advantages with Survey Monkey is that it's convenient, obviously, and it can be confidential. You wouldn't think it could be confidential with 10 people, but there, I could not really tell you which, which, uh, questionnaires were whose. Um, the, some of the problems to do with, with the survey were one, some of the surveys were incomplete. Um, and I'm not sure how that happened. I have to look into that. Um, it would really help if you could all get them in on time. Like some of them came in pretty late. Uh, and one person I don't believe responded at all. We could, um, we only have a limited amount of information. We really need to get everyone's information on this. Um, today's questionnaire is set up as a Likert scale, which means that it goes from outstanding to, um, not acceptable. All of, all of the reports, every one that I got, all of the scores were, um, from proficient to exemplary. There were no negative reports. Um, so in all eight areas of her, of the questionnaire. Um, there are also comments to come in this, the Survey Monkey format. The comments were not associated with the, uh, actual questionnaires and in fact, they didn't get all of the, quite the, uh, comments. Fact, all of the comments were, were very positive. Um, in terms of, you know, best leadership and her, um, working toward improving educational quality, quality it has done, seen in tune to student needs. And steadfastly working to make this school district then, you know, a model. Sure, which I believe we, we've done, we've got best that our team have done. Um, so at this point. Um, and start.
Right, the procedure.
Make the original.
Well, the procedure at this point, because before the school committee can vote on it, we have to meet, our subcommittee must meet with both, whether we do it virtually or in person. She gets the report. She was able to review it, you know, any questions being brought up. So legally, we have to do that. Kim has volunteered and I have volunteered. I know it's been an enormous job with everything being in some way is not associated where it should be. Um, what, that we will do a more, um, extensive narrative. So it really reads like reports in the past. Survey Monkey didn't help us with that. What would help is if any school committee members, you don't have to look up anything from the old, you know, from what you filled in, but if you have a comment that you would like to make, you know, a couple of sentences in any area that you believe, um, we should be acknowledging Beth's work, particularly since this year, almost everything came out, you know, exemplary. It would help Kim and I in writing it in a better narrative. So just send me, you know, if you want to put two or three sentences about new initiatives or the extra work that was done in bringing funding in, just send it to me and we can incorporate it that way. Carl.
Um, Jim mentioned that there is some information that is still needing from school committee members, correct? Or not?
Oh, as far as any one member did not respond at all.
Okay.
So.
But let, let's say that one member is me, which I know it isn't, but, but could you send a message?
I did. I did send messages out.
Okay, so if we don't get a message from you, it's fair for us to assume that we've done our job in completing the evaluation.
Correct.
Cause I think I have, but I haven't. If someone lets me know.
Yes, absolutely.
But it still would be if you have a two or three sentences in different area that you would want acknowledged, that you don't have to associate and open up anything to go to, because there was also an issue. I know when I was working on it, there were areas where if I went to make a comment, I lost.
Here, you.
I lost my rating.
No, not Ken.
So, yeah.
Yeah, literally put that rating in.
Exactly. I decide for you. Yes, did you want to add, Jim?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, first Survey Monkey, I'm well, more well-versed in Survey Monkey than I'd like to be. So if there's something I can do to help force that to present the report for you, the reporting capabilities with Survey Monkey are actually quite good depending on, you know, you kind of get what you give. Um, so future Survey Monkeys, I'm happy to assist in getting those set up. If there's anything I can do to review this one and help consolidate and organize it, also happy to help with that. Um, number two, did you say that it was anonymous? But you know that Carl submitted his, did it report back to you that Carl submitted? Because if he, if it did, then it wasn't truly anonymous.
No, I don't know how. I think people reported to you.
Somebody, somebody.
Okay, they just let you know that, okay.
Right.
Carl was saying that, no, I thought you had noted.
Stephanie, you may be able.
You had sent yours in.
No, I, um, no, I, I was questioning about whether that you thought that I didn't send it in. I know I sent it in. The only, the only problem could have been that it wasn't received for some reason.
Yeah, okay. I think the thing is, this is where we could take advantage of your expertise and you could look at what we did and you might be able to pick up ahead of, you know, ahead of time, look at how we can do a better job with that.
I'm happy to help in any and all respects.
That's all right. Definitely appreciate it. And please, if you would like to add, um, you know, those to comments, little comments, please send it to me before, um, August 2nd. And sooner the better. Thank you very much. I mean, particularly given, I'm editorializing everything Beth did this year, you know, it's, we need an evaluation that reflects, not that the dots didn't, but all skin pulling down the Sarah and I, we lost things and we probably did something wrong because we lost, when we made comments, we were losing.
You literally had to go back and say exemplary or proficient and make your comment, but it didn't rank it up here. So your, whatever, how, well, you rated her didn't exist. So I don't know if you could, if you had extracts verbally saying exemplary. Because it wiped out.
I'd be happy to look at it. I might not be able to catch her tails this time, but I can help us prevent.
That's, that's why.
And I can look and see what's there that we can condense.
And you also have everybody's seat, so you can call upon different people, you know, who were involved in this and say, what was your problem or whatever?
In theory, if it was done from an anonymous standpoint, though, you should not have access to that. You should know.
And I'm saying, if, if there's something, you know, with any of the supplemental things we've had outside of the evaluation, people wrote notes, like I couldn't save anything.
Oh, wait.
Yeah. Okay, unfinished business, Beth. Our initiatives.
Um, okay. Um, so, uh, we have been having really fantastic, um, work being done on our, um, transcend work studio project. Um, uh, we've had, uh, but last night we had a, I'm calling it a very spirited subcommittee meeting of the, um, finance.
of the finance group of the Transcend subsidies. I'm just really happy with people's continued participation and excitement for the initiative and people are volunteering to take on pieces. And we're using the Monday app to, um, kind of be a, um, a, a public board. So people can read and see what's going on with this initiative. If you, um, want to see what, what the committees are working on. But, um, we, we have committed to meet in subcommittee form at least three times during the summer and then we will reengage, um, in our second year with, with the Transcend group and get the Burke Studio experience off the ground. So, um, there's a lot going on and, um, that's part of what I will start updating people about in the July newsletter and August before we get back to school. So.
I'd just like to tell you, Renee was half out of her car and the first thing she said was, we had a fantastic meeting.
Yeah. And it was, it was great. And, um, there were, there were fabulous participation and all hands on deck. So it's been great today. I, I did stroll in at nine o'clock last night after the five o'clock meeting. So we had a good meeting. So, um, our early college, I had the opportunity to work with our early college coordinator and our partners at Simon's Rock today for several hours, um, updating our memorandum, our annual memorandum of understanding and talking about the programming and really reviewing things in preparation for redesignation. So that is also really great work and we just have such a strong working relationship that is, is really, um, really exceptional when, when you look at the success of the program. So, um, and I know Secretary Tuttweiler was the second early college program in the state and he knew about this one. So he's really looking forward to seeing what we're doing here. He thinks it's, it's really innovative and exciting. So, um, we're looking forward to sharing that. And innovation pathways, I believe we are looking at adding a pathway. Is Mr. Thompson here somewhere? Is it, is it clean energy or green? Clean energy that we're working on, cause we know that that, um, kind of works with the other pathways that, that we're already working on, but also comes with, it is, it is coming with some additional funding as, as we so apply and receive that. So, um, we're working, we're working towards that. I don't, is there anything else, Chris, that you want to say about innovation pathways that I didn't?
So just, uh, the application's going to end for a year. Two of the current ones for manufacturing, maybe mission technologies, I'll have to hear back on that. I mean, I'm understanding about this. No, it just happens over and get it again. But it's supposed, you don't really know until they say yes, but, um, that should be fine. And then the other, the planning grant, the clean energy.
Right, starts.
Yep.
Okay, so clean energy is great because I, we can tie it in to the kids who are interested in becoming electricians. This, I know a lot of the college programs, well, the training programs, um, looking at that as specialty.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. But a lot of that's just true.
So it's a real career pathway.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, uh, environment of science. There's, you know, it's the electric vehicle, it's things like that. And, and truly.
And I have to tell you, two different students in the past two weeks told me how much they hated taking early college classes until they took early college class. And I said, that's, you, you are an advertisement. They didn't want to do it. And one of them has now started a side business as a result of her early college experience. So she's able to earn money doing something I know that people don't normally get until graduate school.
And I think that's one of the things that we are trying to correct. We were talking about that in our group is that, um, the early college program is not, um, there to force students to take, to go to college. That's not the intent. The intent of all of our programming is to give students skills that are transferable beyond, um, the next level. So, um, I, I just, I don't want anybody to have a different impression. So what we're working on is making sure that everybody can have an understanding of what our programming is and be able to articulate that in the public. So we have more voices who can say what it is and people are less confused about the intent of, of the programs. But I do feel like even students who aren't pursuing college feel that there's value in the skills and, um, that they learned while being a part of that experience.
And Stephanie, that may be one of the first, this weekend discussion about this. And in order to get the message out to families, it might be an article in our first newsletter, you know, putting in that clarification and, and addressing what some people have said in the community and, and our kids. But I thought it was so funny that two different kids were like, and why you made me, I love it, I'm making money. Okay, any other comments on our initiatives there? And we don't have, we are getting additional early college money.
We are getting.
Oh, good. I, I need to brush. Okay, moving along to our subcommittee of office, should be quick, I think. Finance?
No updates.
Okay. Community relations?
Nothing at the moment, except to say that, um, I'm working on public school advocacy stuff with the Mass Association of School Committees, rural school subcommittee.
Okay. And I don't know about anybody else, but I have really had positive feedback of that on newsletter. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm glad. Yeah, it did.
You didn't get that out?
No, did you get?
Yeah, I got it.
I've been waiting.
Uh, it, it came out really well, if I say so myself.
Do you have any extras here?
I have, I have a, we have a copy in our office. I don't know if it's extra, but I like to keep one, but I will share with you.
As long as you bring it back.
I forgot.
Yeah, no, it came out really well. And, and, um, and the other thing that was nice about it was that the, all the spotlights on its, like, with the, um, with the exchange students that came, just the photographs, all the things that showed up, what the students were doing. Yeah, it, it, man, all power to carry it down.
I mean, just beautifully done.
And so well written, of course.
And I already have someone lined up for an alumni interview.
Okay.
She's finishing, she's doing her senior year and she already has been recruited by the summer job she has in Great Barrington for a job, permanent job, and she wants to be able to come back here. So, yeah, I think it'll be a great interview. Thank you. Policy?
Oh, yeah. Okay. We are waiting for word from MASC.
Correct.
C on when they are sending someone for.
Yes.
Our, whatever we call it, information session, the, uh, learning group, whatever it is. Is there any update?
No.
You or Beth knows about that?
I haven't received any, I haven't heard from them, but I'm, wasn't calling.
Okay, well.
I will follow up again.
Yes, we, we need to because, uh, a lot of policy has changed and ours, and, and, and we are not unique among.
Right.
School districts about that. Ours, uh, is, uh, out of date.
Yes.
To some extent, and we really should be moving on bringing it in line with, if we choose to do that, with what MASC suggests.
It's a good thing in some ways we didn't, because the notice we received in our newsletter said, you're going to be getting a lot. Okay.
Right, so.
All right, moving on, personnel and negotiations. This is the year of negotiating. So last year of the contracts and as of right now, you know, we have not obviously met as yet, but we're going to, going to start early. Art?
Nope, nothing here. Just had it.
Right, you just said a great report. Okay, um, the evaluation. Jim, do you want to add anything?
No. I kept thinking.
Good. Okay, I mean, not good, but yes. Okay, executive minutes review?
Yeah, we, we are, uh, we're in better shape than we were a year ago and worse shape than we should be. So, uh, as soon as the school year begins, I, I would like to.
Good.
Schedule a meeting and, and.
Great.
See if we can get further along in, uh, in eliminating some executive minutes from being secret and, uh, so that, that's where we are.
Okay, Warren, Kim, are you loving this?
I think if I just have to sketch.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yeah, and, uh, their whole stuff.
So Kim has been our Warren representative and she has been diligently doing such. Curriculum, um, will wait to school year or if Julie wants to start sooner, have a meeting sooner.
I mean, well, probably do an update if we decide on a retreat.
Yeah, oh, that's a great idea. Love it. Hey. I kind of just want to write that note. Okay. MASC, Laysan, you didn't, I don't get anything additional from MASC.
No, but no, but I, I want to ask a question and then, and make a very brief comment. Who, as of, I mean, it's relatively early, but who as of this date has plans to go to the November meeting? Kim does, Bonnie? But well, Beth, Beth is always new.
Didn't sign up. That was the one I signed up for, right? Michelle, do you care? Okay, yep.
Okay, so, so, so far, uh, members of the committee are Bonnie, Kim and me. And, and, and here's my suggestion. And, uh, and this is only a suggestion. I have found, I mean, this I think will be my seventh, uh, annual meeting and I always find them valuable. And what I think is particularly valuable, at least for me, has been to at the luncheons or dinners to, and this is not meant as, I hope it's not taken as a slight to my fellow members of this committee, but I always find it helpful to sit at a table with members from other school districts because there is, it, there can almost always be a very interesting cross fertilization of ideas.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you in any way, but I think we could say that for, we get closer.
Oh, I'll say this.
Turn the time. Yes, we'll do it again. Timing. Guess what, Kyle? I found out that the Eagle of Fun no longer is meeting the way it used to. So no worries. That's why they've been named out. All right.
What? I didn't think.
To say you're off the map. Early childhood, childcare, um, and the healthcare, none of those have met, correct?
Correct.
All right, done. All right, and, um, I, the regional agreement review, I think we're going to, I'm going to ask, um, our attorney first, cause he's found a couple of other, um, issues we may want to examine. So rather than us going into the dark, we might as well have a bit of guidance there. All right, future agenda items. The audit report, do we have an update on that?
Well, um, not quite yet, but I, they are coming into district on Monday. So I'm hoping to, um, speak with the audit team and then they can decide what we, you know, when we give our next update on, and where we are.
Okay. And collaboration, we happen to have anything new there, I'm assuming, unless somebody has something?
Well, I think we still have an item on, yeah, of whether or not we want to pursue just sitting down and having a conversation with local neighbors.
Yes.
So I think that's still on the table. We had time to do it, but I think it's something that we could consider maybe finding the time to do as we move into the fall.
Thank you.
Can we extend the 24 hour day?
I, I don't know. Can you put in a certain name like me?
Good idea there. All right, um, I will entertain. And I will entertain on this motion, just adding, you see the motion and not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
So, whoa. You have to read it though, Nancy.
All right, um, so I, I moved that we move, I move into executive session with a motion to, or I put forward a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL C330A, whatever that thing is, 21A to conduct, to conduct to contract negotiations with San Union Personnel. Second.
Did you have to add the part not to return?
And to not to return to the regular meeting.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
Second. All right, you vote, Stephanie?
Yes.
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 Okay, um, we will adjourn this session, but before I adjourn this session, I have to thank Michelle for all of the work in putting together our little event for Carl, beating me up when I didn't turn things in.
Dennis.
Why did I do that? I'm sorry, I'm not knocking you off. Thank you, thank you. All right, motion to, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes. I think the motion first.
First, I'm.
Okay.